Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall on what will be the last City Council meeting of 2014. Thank you all for coming. Why don't we stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Rick Carter is the pastor at Beth Haven Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our great heavenly Father, we come to you this day, and we thank you for all the benefits that you have given to us over this past year. We thank you for the blessings we've enjoyed and for the life that you have given for us to share with one another and with our families and with you. We pray today that you would give wisdom to each of these that sit on this council, God, that your hand might be upon them to make wise and right decisions for the sake of our city. We know that you said in your word that righteousness exalteth a people, but sin is a reproach. And so we ask that you would help each one to make decisions based in righteousness and that which is good and appropriate for us and toward you. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we call the meeting to order, we're on item three of the council agenda. We have a couple of appointments. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item four, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the journal for December 16th, and item four B is to approve the journal for December 2nd. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. We're on to item five, which is request for uncontested continuance.
Mayor, I have two this morning. One is on page 11 on the consent docket, page 11. It's item 7AX. I know this is one that is of interest to Councilman White because he called and asked me about it yesterday, but there are some errors in the item. It's a grant from ACOG, and we'd ask that that be stricken, and we'll fix that and bring that back hopefully next week, but if not, the week after. So let's strike item 7AX on page 11. And then moving to page 12 under item 7, BB3, a claim of Janet Hidorn. We'd ask that that be stricken. The Municipal Counselor's Office would like to rework that and bring that back for next
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, item six is revocable permits. We have one from Cupid's Charities to hold an event called the Cupid's Undy Run, which is scheduled to take place on Valentine's Day. Is anyone here representing this organization? Well, come on forward. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, perfect. Ryan Doonking, I'm this year's race director for the Cupid's Undy Run. It's really a one and a half mile fun run celebration for this whole fundraising effort benefiting the Children's Tumor Foundation to find a cure for neurofibromatosis. It'll be held at the Wormy Dog Saloon, where from noon on Valentine's Day till 4:00 p.m. we'll hang out, celebrate, and then at 2:00 we'll take to the streets in our bedrooms best and run around the city.
So you're running your underwear in February?
Yes, sir, pretty much.
I probably run pretty fast.
That's what we're expecting.
Okay.
But we're hoping 400 participants through, I guess Sheridan and Reno will have cones set up, abide by the street laws, make right of way for the cars. I think we talked to Lieutenant George, and she helped us out with that.
Well, great, and appreciate you coming for us today and good luck with the event.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We'll assess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
I have a few minor questions on the docket. Item E and item N, item S, item Y, that's it.
Okay. Yeah, Pat, I mean Pete.
Also request that AN, like Nancy, be voted on separately.
Okay.
And Mayor, I think I'd like, I'd mention, I have a quick question about 7T.
T, all right.
And I would like AW to be voted on separately.
All right, Pat, you want to go ahead and get us started with item E?
Excuse me, yes, Your Honor, thank you. Item E is a simple, supposedly simple closing of a utility easement, but it also provides for the relocation of sanitary sewer that is in place right now. Who will pay for that relocation?
I'm sure the applicant will.
He doesn't say so, and right, I think it might be wise in future times to specify who's going to pay for some of the cost. Item N, who is, who and what is, I guess, the Oklahoma After School Network?
It's a nonprofit.
How long has it been in place?
I can't answer that.
Because we've asked the city schools one time about their after school programs, they were surprised they had any at all. They didn't know about them.
Okay.
I wondered who is...
The Oklahoma After School Network is a nonprofit that was... Come on up, Shannon. That was, is going to be contracting with us through the Strong Neighborhood Initiative in those specific areas to provide some enhanced programs. That's Shannon.
And thank you. And if you'd like to, Cheryl Lovelady, who's the executive director of Oklahoma After School Network, is here, and she'd be more than happy to explain what they do, but they are a nonprofit in Oklahoma City who specializes in STEM and STEAM curriculums for after school programs. So this is, that's their organization, but she can definitely provide more information for you if you'd like.
I'd like to hear just a few, what they've done in the past and how they're organized and what...
She can definitely explain that to you.
What influence they're going to have on Oklahoma City Public Schools.
I'll just say it's a good one. We'll let her explain that.
Good morning. Cheryl Lovelady, 1423 North Classon Drive in Oklahoma City. I'm the director of the Oklahoma After School Network. We're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). Been around for about 10 years here in Oklahoma City. We serve programs statewide in trying to improve quality, provide professional development, and overall improve the quality of after school and out of school time programs in Oklahoma. Last year, we contracted with the city for a project at Moon Elementary, which is in Councilman Pettis's district, and we served kids from Moon, Edwards, and also from Thoma Parks.
Let me interrupt you for a second if I may. Ask a question.
Yeah.
Was your contract with the city school system or with those individual schools?
With the city of Oklahoma City.
Okay.
This is a continuation of last year's program. We're now expanding to Eugene Fields Elementary, continuing the work at Moon due to some great success that we had over there and then expanding to Eugene Fields.
Have you done any work specifically with Oklahoma City Public Schools?
Yes, this was a partnership with Oklahoma City Public Schools.
Okay, and now Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City Public Schools. There's a...
This was a partnership between the city of Oklahoma City and the Oklahoma City Public School District. So this is, this is the two entities working together. And we came, we came last year. Dave Lopez was a champion of this program. Superintendent New has continued to be a champion of this. We saw dramatic increases in reading and math scores through just a four-week intervention and summer program at Moon last year, so we're excited about our success.
I'm not questioning the viability of your program. I just didn't understand where it fit into things because in Pete's and my discussion with the school board, some of their members and the administration, they didn't realize they had an after school program.
Oh, they have many after school programs and they're well aware of this one. And it's a cost-sharing program as well, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one additional question. Can you talk about the success at Moon for just a second from the beginning to the end for us, the summer STEM program?
It was a very collaborative group. We had a group of about 30 stakeholders that met monthly. We also met with a group of teachers that collaborated on the curriculum and how the program was going to look. We surveyed the community and asked their opinions about what kind of programs should be provided for kids, so we got their input as well. It was a four-week summer program held at Douglas High School due to the fact that Moon was under some reconstruction at the time. So we had children from those three elementary schools for 16 instructional days and saw a dramatic increase in reading scores, particularly because we did a very customized reading intervention with those kids. So each kid had a pre and post that was all done through Oklahoma City Public Schools, and we saw, we saw some great results. The kids also participated in field trips. We think it's important that they learn about their community and their place in it, so they also did field trips as well.
Cheryl, when I first read this, I thought there was a typo in it, and then when I read the memo, I was so happy to see arts included along with the STEM programming. I just think it's a critical component, and STEAM may have to become our new buzzword rather than STEM.
Exactly. Yeah, we're proud of it.
Now, during this past summer, I had the opportunity to visit the STEM program, and in my view was outstanding. So again, thank you for everything that you and your organization have done.
Thank you. Thank you for participating in all the stakeholder breakfast. I think we fed you a lot of eggs.
Well, I think it'd be helpful to the council if we had some kind of progress report based on their success, their upcoming efforts, so that we can feel comfortable about what they're doing and...
There's a case study posted on the SNI website, the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, that kind of outlines the whole, you know, beginning to end process on Moon. And I think there's also a memo that may be available to you that we'll get, we'll get to you as well.
I'd like to confirm the Oklahoma City Schools' participation with Oklahoma School Board and their superintendent.
Sure, there's a memo of understanding on that. We'll get that to you as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, prior to the MOU, basically there was a verbal agreement. And so this go around, there is now a MOU because we had to do some unique things prior to, but now there is a MOU.
Because I had a law professor one time tell me that verbal agreements aren't worth the people that live.
You're right, that's why we got it. That's why we have the MOU.
Item S is a completion of a project, a drainage project in Blue STEM area. And one of the concerns that the property owners adjacent to that ditch had was the amount of debris that had collected in the ditch because of the failure of the walls. And the completion doesn't specifically, this completion notice doesn't specifically address the cleanup. Has that been completed to the satisfaction of the city?
Councilman, I believe it has, but I'll make sure that it, that it has. So to explain the project a little bit better, there was a segmental retaining system that helped protect those banks in that channel. They failed in the May of 2013 storms, but what's been put back is not the segmental block system. They put back a geofabric system that won't put debris in the channel in the future should there be severe storms. But I will follow up and make sure that that was cleaned up as a part of the project.
And I think, Eric, if I might make a suggestion, that we need to go back and make sure that there weren't some of those blocks that were loosened to some extent, that a heavy rain would cause them to fail as well in order that we do the sort of a proactive approach.
And part of our channel cleaning contracts that we do, I mean, we do some visual inspections monthly, and so we try to stay on top of that and do our best and identify those before those issues occur, and we'll endeavor to do that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
On why, Your Honor, I have a question about the paragraph that says the city is required to procure and maintain liability insurance. Is that in addition, in addition to our self-insured basis?
It is. They require a policy on that, and this is to provide maintenance to a maintenance facility for the canal that we, in the river that we have down adjacent to the railroad. Having that property, that maintenance facility's been in operation for, I don't know, seven, eight, nine years.
But my question was if the liability insurance, we...
It is beyond, it is beyond what we, our self-insurance.
Okay, thank you. On item Z, I have a question. We have a whole bunch of signal systems. The DOT has recommended that we improve, and I wondered how much is our 10% of the share of that is going to cost us?
Eric, answer that.
And I don't need an answer right now, but I just would like to know.
Just looking at my notes really quickly, Councilman. I may need to get that answer to you following the meeting.
That's fine, whatever it takes. I don't want to spend a lot of time looking for some kind of...
Follow up with you on that.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Meg, you wanted to speak on item T?
I did, Eric. You might just step back up. This is just a very quick question, I hope, and it's related to Project 180. There's a change order that was a no cost order, but it added 21 days, and I didn't see exactly a good explanation for that.
So we actually were still in a utility relocation mode, and utilities were taking a little bit longer than anticipated, so the 21 days actually reset the contractor's start date, remembering that we're actually paying incentives now for the Oklahoma City contractors to finish their work early. So to give them that still reasonable opportunity to achieve those early milestones, the milestones were reset by 21 days.
Okay, because the clock shouldn't have started while the utilities were still being located.
We wrote the work order while the utilities were still underway, and they weren't 100% complete, so they could not start work on the day that we actually asked them to begin.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Had some requests to pull some items to be voted on separately, so why don't we consider the motion in the second that's currently on the table to exclude item AD, AE, AN, and AW? Understood? Okay, so we'll vote on the rest of the docket at this time?
I'd like to ask a question about Pete.
Okay.
If I could. This is an item for the final plans and specs for the improvements to a couple of parks. One of them is the Jose Vineyard Park, which is going to about the new southwest wellness center. And I just want to be sure that there's been coordination between the planning, because I know the wellness center plans a walking track, and it certainly doesn't need to have two walking tracks, so...
Thank you for asking the question, Councilmember. We are in talks with them. We will add to their walking track. Most of their loop will be contained within the property that they're going to be building in their facility, and our track, our walking path in the park will connect with theirs so that they will have the opportunity for a longer walking session, if you will.
Okay. You are talking to them, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And they're in the room, and they will be doing a presentation on that later this morning.
Okay, good.
All right, ready to vote the council docket except for the four items that I previously said we're going to exclude for this vote? All right, cast your votes. Consent docket passes unanimously. Now let's vote on items AD and AE, which we're going to be pulled at the request of Councilman White. Can I get a motion on AD and AE? All right, cast your votes. AD and AE pass unanimously. Now can I get a motion on item AN? We'll vote on AN separately. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. And it passes seven to one. And could we vote on item AW? Can I get a motion on AW? All right, cast your votes. And it passes eight to one. All right, we're on to the concurrents docket. Is there a motion there? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any individual comments or considerations on the concurrents docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 6. The address is 5621 South Western Avenue. Meg?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. This is a very active commercial corridor, lots of other ABC licenses in the area. There were no protests at the planning meeting, and so I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions then on item 9A1?
Your Honor, I'd like to make the comment, it's, this is one of those things I think the city ought to try to get involved in, is we do all the groundwork for the ABC license, and we put the limitations in effect, and we, there's a, it's a two-step process. After we act, the applicant has to go to the ABC Commission and get approval, get a new license. And if we could do that at the city level, it would eliminate one step in the process. We'd have to get some kind of state change in law, but I think it's something worth working on.
I'm not sure I understand it entirely. The state requires that they get the approval of the municipality.
Yes, sir. And I think if we could give the ABC license directly from the city, because the city does all the inspection, we make sure that the zoning is appropriate and it does not conflict with schools and churches and the like, and so to the extent that we could eliminate one stop in the process might be helpful.
So, so you're suggesting we pursue that as state law?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we're on to item 9A2. This is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 4335 Northwest 23rd Street. It's currently R1 single-family, O2 general office, and C3 community commercial, and it would become a new C3 community commercial district. Ed?
So expanded bomb store, planning commission recommended approval. There were no protests. If nobody signed up, I'd move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 9A2? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 12001 South Rockwell Avenue. It's currently R.A. single-family, one-acre rural residential, double-A agricultural, and AE2 airport environment zone, and it would become a new pod if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this? This was studied by the Planning Commission and approved unanimously. The applicant is here if there are any questions, but with nobody to protest, I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on 9A3. Anyone hoping to speak on this item other than the applicant? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 5815 Melton Drive. It's currently O2 general office and see-through community commercial district, and it would become a new simplified planning unit development if approved. James?
Has anybody signed up? This is just a spud to allow boarding and daycare facility for animals. Got a C3 base zoning. The interesting thing is it actually backs up to where the Hefner goats are, so that could be, that could be kind of fun. But it passed unanimously, the planning commission, so I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second on 9A4. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 10000 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. Pete?
I see that the plan of the regulation was supposed to be a public area with that as well.
Are there any protesters here hoping to speak today on this item? Doesn't look like it.
Yes. It was deferred at Planning Commission for a meeting, and they agreed to a height limit. It's, it's a property owner across to the northeast from this site. They agreed on a reduced height for the building on the north and a 15-foot green belt with trees on the north, and he was comfortable with that agreement.
Unless there's someone here to speak today adverse to the proposal, I move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is also in Ward 4 at 4800 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently R1 single-family residential and a planning unit development, and it would be a new spud if approved.
I have a same question on this one. There was a protest. Was it resolved? I see it was passed by the planning commission, but subject to technical...
Yes, they were concerned about the density of the apartments, and he reduced it to 20, no more than 20 units per acre, and required limitations on the windows looking down to the houses on the south, and they seemed uncomfortable with that.
I haven't been contacted by anybody. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the proposal? Hearing none, I move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9A7 is also in Ward 4 at 829 Southwest Grand Boulevard. It's currently R2 general office, and it would be, become a simplified planning unit development. Pete?
This, I'm going to move appeal with the planning commission, I voted to approve it, and the, there were no protests. This is an interesting strip of houses. There were houses on the north side of Grand Boulevard that bordered on Western and ran to almost, about halfway to Walker, about halfway between Western and Walker. They were the nicest homes in South Oklahoma City for a number of years. They're beautiful, large, two-story houses. They're all fallen in disrepair. The one on the corner was, that's part of this lot, was removed, and now this lot's going. It's a sad commentary on our ability to maintain some of that really nice housing to see this happen, but it, I know David's very familiar with that area. He'd gone to church there for years. But I'm going to move approval, but I, I would hope that somebody would get interested enough in preserving some of that architecture that still remains there on the north side, because it's not, the commercial's not going to go any deeper into the, I don't believe, into the neighborhood than this. But it's, so I'm going to move approval by summoning this over. I'll pass the collection plate here in a minute.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9B would close a right-of-way for the courts building. It's in Ward 6. Meg?
Yes, the city of Oklahoma City is the applicant here, and it's just a small portion of the street right-of-way. Bob, I did want to make sure, there are no alleys involved in this closure. There are no alleys involved in this closure at all. This is just...
Just street right-of-way.
Some of the street right-of-ways. I'd move approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9C is a request to build a crematory at 910 Northwest 79th Street. Edits in Ward 2.
Anybody signed up to speak? No protests. Planning Commission recommended approval. I'd move for approval.
Cast your votes on 9C. It passed unanimously. Item 9D is an ordinance here for final hearing today, and this would change our retirement policies to fall in line with IRS guidelines. All right, voting on item 9D. It passed unanimously. Item 9E is a couple of items that come to us from the traffic commission. Yeah, Wiley?
We need the emergency on 9D.
All right, Wiley's saying we need the emergency on 9D. Can I have a motion then? All right, voting on the emergency on 9D. It passed unanimously, 9-0. Now on to item 9E, it's a couple of items that come to us from the traffic commission. The first deals with some metered parking spaces in Ward 6. Meg, you okay with this?
I am. E1 and 2 both relate to removing some spaces to create a drive-through or pass-through for the new Pubco Communications Building down on West Main Streets. I will have to vote on them separately, I think. I'll move approval on E1.
All right, we're voting on 9E1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then 9E2?
And 9E2, I would move approval also. This, this moves a, one reserved space, a handicap space to a new location.
All right, cast your votes on 9E2. It passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing. This is changing some of the auditing procedures for hotel and motel taxes. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9F today? All right, how about a motion to send this forward? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9G is an item that's being introduced today, and Bob Teener's here to present the concept. Bob?
Just real briefly, back in 2012, February 2012, council approved an ordinance that added adult entertainment use to our public nuisance abatement ordinance. And at the time, it required two convictions of adult entertainment activity before we could issue a notice to the operator or owner to abate the problem. The proposal today would change the convictions to two incidents of evidence that there is adult entertainment activity going on at those facilities. And then we would be able to submit a notice, an abatement notice to the property owner, the leasie, and the manager. Basically, what that notice does gives us the ability to take them to district court and try to do some additional things to shut the illegal activity down. and try to do some additional things to shut the illegal activity down. And the other change is, like I said, this clarifies that we can submit the notice to the owner, the leasie and the manager of the operation. That's really, if anybody has any questions.
All right, any questions today for Bob? We'll be setting this item for a public hearing here on July 20th, and then it's scheduled for final adoption on January 27th. And a motion today would just move it forward.
Second.
Cast your votes. And 9G moves forward, a public hearing, January 20th. Item 9H is some modifications to the urban renewal plan. This has to do in Ward 7. Kathy?
Good morning. The item that we have this morning for you is the Northeast Urban Renewal Plan. This will be the, the introduction of this plan to city council. This is a new urban renewal plan that has been in the process of being created over the past several months to try to address issues in northeast Oklahoma City. The plan has been through all of the steps in the process, and we'll go through that in a minute, but just wanted to go through a couple of the overview things about urban renewal. First of all, can we go back one slide? The Oklahoma Urban Renewal Act provides powers to redevelop areas that are determined to be blighted by the city council. The process is that the authority prepares the plan, identifying the general description, the area, and the, the proposed actions to be taken in the area. And, and the step that we're at today is that the urban renewal plan must be approved by the city council. The process for creating an urban renewal plan is that the first step is that a blight study must be approved by the city council, and the council passes a resolution determining that the area is blighted. That study was presented to you several months ago, and you did make the finding that the area was blighted. The authority then goes about preparing a plan, and as I mentioned, it includes the general description of the area, a boundary. It establishes the priorities for rehabilitation and redevelopment in the area. The plan is then submitted to Planning Commission and then to city council. The city council meeting requires a 15-day public notice prior to the, the timing of this hearing, and that's what's today. We are required to post signs in the area so that the area residents know about the actions about to take place. This is the calendar that we've followed for the adoption of this plan, just to kind of refresh your memory on some of the dates. The blight study was approved by the city council on July 29th. We introduced the plan to northeast community groups and stakeholders in August and September. Some of those stakeholders are here today, and I really appreciate their attendance at this morning's meeting. In September, the plan was introduced to the Urban Renewal Authority Board, and that the board approved it on November 4th. On December 11th, we took the, the plan to the Planning Commission, and they recommended approval of the plan and forwarded it on to you for hearing today. The first slide that we want to, I just want to go through is the, the map of the area. This is the proposed area for the new urban, northeast Renaissance urban renewal area. It basically will correspond to the next item that's on your agenda, which is the creation of a new TIF, Tax Increment Financing District. So, this area will, basically travels along the corridor of northeast 23rd Street, captures some areas along Martin Luther King, I-35 and Kelly to help us have additional tools for the redevelopment of this area. Go to the next one. It's not. The next slide shows the relationship of this new urban renewal area to the existing John F. Kennedy urban renewal area to the south. This urban renewal area has been in place since the 70s. It's been one of the areas where the Urban Renewal Authority's been very active in building single-family homes recently. One of the things that is required in the, in the state statutes for the adoption of the new plan is that the consistency of the land uses with the comp plan, and this shows the land uses in the area, and the Planning Commission did find that it was consistent. It also has provisions in it that we will, we will encourage development, that is, in accordance with the Oklahoma City Plan and any other planning documents that the council adopts. The plan includes policies on land use, as I mentioned, and building requirements. It does include a land acquisition and disposition policy. It approves the use of owner participation agreements, which is where if an owner has a piece of property that is a part of a redevelopment agreement, we could enter into an agreement with that owner, not acquire their property, but enter into an agreement with them so that they could participate in the development as a, possibly like an equity partner. It includes our redevelopment obligations and requirements and the relocation policy that the Urban Renewal Authority follows per Oklahoma law. Some of the objectives of the plan are to provide a tool for economic development and revitalization, to stimulate infill development and new development for residential and commercial property, to, to encourage and promote developer and business outreach and recruitment, support job creation and improve the infrastructure and neighborhood amenities in the area. The, the biggest part of the acquisition of the urban renewal plan is our acquisition plan, and the urban renewal, the creation of an urban renewal area does permit the Urban Renewal Authority to use eminent domain in certain circumstances. And these have been limited in this plan by certain provisions that we believe are appropriate for the area, but still will allow us to do limited acquisition if necessary to remove blight and to create redevelopment. So, the proposed conditional authorization states that we would acquire property only if the Urban Renewal Authority Board finds that one of the following situations exists, that the property is blighted, abandoned or unimproved, that the property is necessary for public use, when the public use means that a public entity will own the property and it will be generally open and accessible to the public, so a street or a park, for example. The property is contiguous to, adjacent to or in the same block as property owned by the Urban Renewal Authority and is necessary to create an, an assemblage for redevelopment. Property is occupied by historically or architecturally significant structure, which is not currently occupied for residential purposes, and that its acquisition is necessary to prevent its destruction or facilitate its preservation. And finally, that relocation must be followed, must be provided following the Oklahoma Urban Renewal Law and the, and the urban renewal plan requirements. Basically, that means that we pay relocation costs when we acquire a piece of property and, and there's a ongoing business or, or a person living in it. The proposed acquisition policies also state that we will not use eminent domain on property that is owned by a church or religious institution and is currently used as such, and that any owner-occupied home would not be acquired unless the board determines that the property is necessary for a public use or is blighted, and the acquisition is necessary to remove blight. We have vetted this acquisition policy with the stakeholders and many groups in the northeast community. We believe that it is, it is limiting enough that the community can have some comfort in our ability to use eminent domain when we need to, but to be careful about acquiring single-family homes, for example, or, or church property. And, go to the next. Let's go. Authorized costs, the, the plan also has to address what authorized costs are, what costs are authorized for redevelopment, and that includes capital improvement bonds, appropriations by the city, expenditures by Okura, apportioned tax increments, which is the revenues from the Tax Increment Financing District, project revenues and other authorized sources. Okay. And that is all I have on the urban renewal plan.
All right, it's in Ward 7. John, you want to speak on this item today?
Excuse me, I do, but before I speak, I do want to, I know Councilman White has some questions. I'll saw counsel and Gleyner, and then I'll give my view. Thank you.
Okay.
What, how do the limitations on acquisition by eminent domain differ from those that we've had in the past?
Well, some of our other plans have not restricted acquisition of single-family homes, for example, and they, and they have not had this kind of conditional, you know, you have to meet one of these findings in order for it to be acquired. They've been much more broad-based.
It seems like if you include the idea that the property has to be blighted, and you've already had a designation that the area is blighted, that's kind of a meaningless limitation, it would seem to me.
Well, but I think, and my, I think my attorney's in the room, but if I understand correctly, the area can be determined blighted, but individual properties in the area may not be singly blighted. So, we're looking at properties that are individually blighted.
Okay. The big concern I have is that we don't, we haven't learned anything in the last 40 years about what to do with urban renewal. I was around in the 60s when Harrison Walnut, and I was on the council in the 80s. 20 years after that, it was still a burning situation. Right now, most of the redevelopment that's occurring in the northeast part is property that was acquired 20, 40 years ago. People were moved from their homes, and it was supposed to be a renaissance for that area at that time. That was the, that was the theme. It was a renaissance. It turned out to be a renaissance for somebody, but it's not been a renaissance for those that lost their homes, because the people that lost their homes are scattered all over Oklahoma City now. That neighborhood that once was a vibrant neighborhood is gone today. It was, it has been gone for 30 or 40 years. No, and the people that are now moving in there are not the same people that were moved out. They're not the same socio-economically, they're not the same in terms of opportunity. I, I just want to be sure that we're sensitive to the mistakes we made then, and we don't repeat that. To me, that's a terrible human tragedy that happened 30, 40 years ago. It's going to be, you know, we're going to look back at it a hundred years and say, oh, what a nice, wonderful thing all these big houses are and big million-dollar condos are over there. But that, that didn't help one iota for the people that lost their homes and had been in those neighborhoods all their lives. And I, I just want to be sure that we're sensitive, we're going to be sensitive to that this time. I don't drive over there that the thought doesn't occur to me of what was there, and I'm not sure what's there now is any better than it was before. In fact, I'm going to repeat myself, which I'm expected to do at least once.
You're allowed.
But I, I think we lost something as a result of that. We lost a whole, a, a, a whole part of our history, a part of our social and economic history is gone. It's just, it was just taken away, and it laid there fallow for 20, 30, 40 years, and no, and those that, that, those that were supposed to receive the benefit of it received nothing virtually, nothing. They got relocated, but they didn't want to be relocated. I mean, it's hard to equate relocation expenses with, with something of positive value if you don't want to move. And, and I just don't want to see that happen again. I just, I, it, I have, I have pain every time I drive in that part of Oklahoma City to see what we did and how little we did, how few of the promises that we made were kept.
Pete, which neighborhoods are you referring to specifically?
I'm talking about east of, what's left is now east of, all east of Lincoln.
Like in the area where the schools, the high school is?
And the 2nd Street, where Douglas High School is. The whole idea was, originally was, it thought this was going to be a renaissance for that area, and that things were going to, good things were going to happen. I, I don't think we factored in one thing, which makes it, it made it virtually impossible to fulfill that promise, and that was the Broadway extension. I mean, it made it, it cut the area off in a way that made it very, very difficult to, to integrate it, if you will, into, into, into the, into the promise that we were making.
Yeah.
But I don't, I think you can say that now, but here we are 25, 30 years later, and the, the renovation that's going on, on that property that was acquired, is not the kind of thing that was promised, even on the east side now. It's not the same thing.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I worry about the lack of, of sensitivity to the, to the question.
Right. Well, my grandmother lived in those neighborhoods, so I'm, I'm very familiar with what you're talking about. I mean, she lived there in those times.
And, and I.
And she had to move. But are you talking about there, east of Lincoln, west of Lincoln on like, you know, 12th, 13th, 14th? Are you talking about over by Douglas High School?
Well, I'm talking about all of it.
Okay.
I don't want to be in a situation where we take land and it lays there for 25, 30 years waiting for the miracle to happen. It's not like a A.A.
You know, I, I think our history is that we have learned from those mistakes, you know, all over. I mean, downtown, everywhere else, you don't start tearing things down unless you have a funded plan to figure out what you're going to do next.
I, I don't want this to sound contentious between you and I, because I think, I hope, I hope you're right.
No, we're on the same side.
Right. I, I just.
I think you're, you're issuing a warning, and I'm just saying, I mean, I don't think we have any sort of recent history to not being sensitive to the issues that you're bringing up today. I mean, I think we've kind of proven ourselves since then, and that was 50 years ago. I think we've proven since then that we do have the sensitivities you're, you're suggesting we should have, but if it's one more reminder for anybody that might be listening out there, I don't think that's a bad thing.
I guess I would differ about how sensitive we've been, but, but I don't think you can tear property down, and I agree with 100% what you said. I don't think you can tear property down without a plan and not pay a terrible price for it. And we talk about the great renaissance and all this laying out there now is making Oklahoma City this wonderful place. I, what, nobody talks now about the 30 years that we didn't have a downtown, that we had a, we could have planted wheat downtown. I mean, what we lost by that? I just don't want that to happen again. I don't, and I don't want to be part of, at the front end, I don't want to be part of it happening again.
Thanks. James?
Okay, well, I certainly appreciate, I'm kind of going to talk about the same subject, but in a little different way. I certainly appreciate the urban renewal limiting their, their ability to use the, use eminent domain. There's, it's that third item on, on that slide that says the property is contiguous to, adjacent to, or in the same block as other property owned by Okura, and its acquisition is necessary to create an assemblage for redevelopment. That one, I feel like oversteps the proper use of eminent domain, and I think that whenever, you know, I, I actually don't think that Okura will abuse that, but it, it is a very open-ended, it's a very open-ended use of, of eminent domain, and so I, I view it as city council's role in this, in this instance to limit the, the power that, that government entities have, and Okura is, would be under our authority, I guess, if you say that. And so, we're, we're basically giving them the ability to do that, which they could abuse. They could abuse that. I don't think they will, but they could, and, and I don't think we, I don't think we want that. So, for me, I, I would like that item, which would, I think the technical term for it would be 3C, 1C in the, in actual plan to be, to be taken out, and I, I think that that would make it a better plan, and I don't think that it will hinder the effectiveness of it. It might make it a little slower, it might make it a little bit more tedious, but I don't think that the, the results will be negative.
Okay.
I could be wrong.
Could we, do you want to make that as amendment?
Yeah.
Make that we could vote on?
May I? Ask a question?
Yeah, David.
If that were to occur, somebody disputed the fact that their property was being acquired or condemned, what appeals right do they have to challenge that decision? Do they come before the city council or?
Well, the first step would be to go to the Urban Renewal Authority. The Urban Renewal Authority Board would have to make a finding that they, you know, wish to acquire this piece of property. And if they said, yes, staff, go ahead, we want to acquire this property, we would, we would put in motion the steps necessary to bring about the acquisition. At that point, a series of legal steps. the acquisition. At that point, a series of legal steps come into play where the property owner can, um, challenge the ability to take through eminent domain. They can, I mean, there's a lot of different, um, steps in that legal process where they use the court system to, to make their case.
But it does go through the court system, and, and, and as James says, we no longer have any input at that point. We, the council.
No. Once you adopt this plan with these, with this land acquisition policy, uh, it, it does not come back to you.
Well, let me, you know, just add that a lot of the eminent domain abuse, my, my definition of abuse, everybody's might be different, that you hear about, or, you know, are national stories, and you hear about strange things that happen, and, and I think there's this, you know, concern that, well, that could happen here, but actually, I think the state laws in Oklahoma are pretty responsible for eminent domain. I mean, when you compare them to some of the other laws in other states where I think irrational things have allowed to occur, I mean, I think, I'm grateful that the state of Oklahoma has come up with some, some pretty good guidelines, and I think the history shows that the court systems have been very sensitive to the property owners. So, when a municipality inside the state of Oklahoma does get what I would term overly aggressive, the courts will come in and say, and stop it. And it's a work in progress. We, none of us can predict the future, sitting here today, and as Kathy mentions, these individual items will not come back before this board. Uh, but we are acting within the state laws in Oklahoma, and I think the history shows that they've been pretty responsibly held, if not by individual municipalities, ultimately by the courts that are, uh, run under the jurisdiction of the state.
And, and I agree with that. I think that, but I think this does apply, or this is under state law, and so I think, in theory, because of item C, uh, Okura could, um, force a business owner who is not breaking the law, who's not doing anything wrong, to sell it to, so they could make a block. And so, I mean, if, if this, if that had some sort of instance in there where it was, uh, where it would declare it a nuisance, or would declare it a, some sort of, that it's, there's tons of crime going on at this place, or all of these things, I would be much more comfortable with it if it limited it more than just Okura already owning something adjacent to it or in the, in the same block. So, that, that's my, uh, that's my hesitation with it.
Okay. Ed?
Can I, in the, in the Blight Study, it says that forty percent of the acreage within the study area is tax-exempt properties. How, how will that impact the success of the TIF, if at all?
Um, well, the Blight Study applied to the urban renewal area, which is actually larger than the TIF district, so I really can't, I don't know that I can make a correlation between forty percent of the property is tax-exempt and the success of the TIF district, because the TIF district is smaller.
Do you know what percent of the TIF district was tax-exempt property?
I don't know off, no, I don't know off the top of my head.
Was there?
Obviously, though, with more tax-exempt property, there's less opportunity for increased increments, so it will be slower. I think that's the point you're trying to make, is that if there's not...
Yeah, forty percent seemed high.
Yeah, well, the, I mean, all the state, the, the urban renewal plan area includes some, um, state-owned properties along Twenty-Third Street and, um, along Kelly, for example, so that, that really impacted that number quite a bit. Um, I, I think that we took the, the amount of tax-exempt property, though, into account when we prepared the budget and the amount of, uh, the estimates of how much private investment could happen. We take that into account. I mean, if a property's tax-exempt, we're not gonna get any increment off of it. Chances are, it will never develop for private uses, so we, we take that into account when we look at the preparation of the budget and the estimated private investment that's a part of the TIF plan.
Was there debate about how law, I mean, it seems law, I mean, to go all the way to Midwest City, was there internal debate about whether we needed to go to Sooner Road?
Uh, yes. We had a lot of debate about the size of it, and a lot of discussions. There was a great deal of input from the, from the citizens in the community about what they wanted to see happen, and that corridor along Twenty-Third Street was pretty important to them, to try to see what we could do to revitalize it and redevelop it. There's some, there's some, uh, very blighted properties all along to the, to the east boundary of this plan.
So, on the, on the eminent domain, that, that decision would be made, I guess, by the majority vote of the five Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
And who, who are those Board of Commissioners, and what is their occupation?
Uh, well, the chairman is Larry Nichols, who's the, uh, chairman of Devon Energy. James Talbert is the vice chairman. He is a private businessman, owns Full Circle Bookstore, among other things, property in and around Oklahoma City. Uh, Russell Perry is another commissioner. He's, um, the owner of The Black Chronicle and Perry Publishing and Perry Media. Uh, Mary Malone is another commissioner. She's the executive director of the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation, and Mark Befford is the final commissioner, and he is a, uh, property owner in downtown Oklahoma City.
Is he, he's a real estate developer?
He's a real estate, he's a commercial real estate owner and developer, yes.
Does he do any development in this area, or does anyone?
He's, he's not done any development in this area that I'm aware of.
So, what, is there a mechanism if someone has a conflict to recuse themselves? Has that ever happened?
Absolutely.
And people have recused themselves?
Absolutely. And that has happened in the past, yes.
So, what are the checks and balances on this? Those are the five today, ten years from now, fifteen. I, I assume this is a twenty-five-year TIF?
Uh, the TIF is a twenty-five-year TIF. The urban renewal plan, once it's created, it's in effect, and, you know...
So, twenty years from now, whoever the five Board of Commissioners, what, what are the checks and balances?
Well, they have to file conflict of interest statements, just like any public official does, and, and our legal counsel is involved with them if they have questions about whether or not they need to refuse themselves.
Is it, could you legally make it so that to execute eminent domain, it would have to come back before the council as well?
To execute a what?
To, to utilize eminent domain, an eminent domain action, that it would not only have to have majority support of the Board of Commissioners, but would also have to come back to the council for approval?
I'm sure that that could be done, yeah.
So, that could be an amendment to this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other council discussion?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a somewhat difficult situation, but I think we are at, at the point in our city where this, uh, needs to happen. Let me, first of all, say, Councilman White, I share your concerns. I mean, I share your concerns all the way, but the urban renewal of yesteryear is not the urban renewal, uh, of today. Uh, and, and I do understand where you're coming from, and I understand the concerns from the community, uh, for, as the whole eminent domain factor. I think in this case, uh, what's different between yesteryear and, uh, what we are doing today, uh, we are limiting of the eminent domain factor, uh, for, as, uh, single-family, uh, homes. We have to admit, as a city, years ago, uh, when it came to eminent domain, it was used on houses. I mean, clearly, uh, years ago, urban renewal, uh, did destroy, uh, some neighborhoods. I mean, we must admit that. But what we are doing today, uh, is different than, um, before. I see that I have individuals, uh, property owners who live in the Capital View Neighborhood Association. Uh, we are not going through destroying their neighborhood. What we are doing is simply, uh, using tools available to deal with, uh, example, Twenty-Third Street, example, uh, Kelly, example, Martin Luther King. Uh, it's time that the city takes responsibility in making sure economic development happens in northeast Oklahoma City. Uh, I'm gonna give two examples of why, um, the whole eminent domain factor needs to be used in this case. Of course, several months ago, back in March, we announced, uh, that we had a developer who wanted to put in a full-size grocery store, uh, which that particular entity is Biflis Corporation. Well, Biflis Corporation plans on putting in a thirty-to-forty-million-dollar development right there on Twenty-Third and Martin Luther King. Sadly, just east of their proposed development, I have a crack prostitution motel, where the owner refuses to turn his property into something that is good. Crack motel, prostitution motel. It is not okay. Now, granted, our police department, uh, and our legal staff, they continues to work on that particular property over and over and over again. We have wasted thousands of taxpayers' dollars trying to clear and clean up that crack motel. Just, uh, uh, west of this proposed King's Crossing development, I have a crack car wash. And I get emotional. I have a crack car wash, where people have been killed and stabbed and shot. That is not okay. And I give those two examples because that's what eminent domain would be used for. Again, just west of the proposed King's Crossing development, I have a crack gas station that within the last several months been vacant. Now, the particular property owner is trying to open up that crack gas station yet again. I'm sorry, my brothers and sisters. As a city, we ought to do better. So, yes, in certain extreme cases, we do need to use eminent domain. People in northeast Oklahoma City who live in northeast Oklahoma City deserve better than what we have. We deserve better. And right now, we don't have it, because we have property owners who refuse to do anything good with their property. This has been going on for several years, probably before I was even born. And as a city, we need to step up to the plate and say, hey, no more. And again, in this case, we're not dealing with tearing up neighborhoods. I have lived in almost every part of northeast Oklahoma City. We're not gonna tear up many neighborhoods, but it is a promise that, yes, we need to go after those dilapidated, crime-infested, blighted properties, because that's the only way we're gonna be able to create economic development. What good does it do if you put in a forty-million-dollar development, when you got right to the west of you, high-crime property, right to the east of you, high-crime property, and right north of you, high-crime property, where the owners, again, refuse to do anything positive? We deserve better than what we have. Now, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Shadid, uh, you brought up the whole conflict of interest and, and all of that, but let me remind you, sir, your family has over twenty acres in northeast Oklahoma City. Your family has more than twenty acres in Oklahoma City. And guess what, sir? Despite of how I felt maybe a year ago this time, I'm even working with your family to turn around their properties, to make something positive out of their properties. But, but, but again, Councilman Shadid, hey, y'all have twenty acres. Y'all own property on Twenty-Third Street and Thirty-Sixth Street, and for years, nothing positive has happened. But now, something positive is gonna happen. Now, again, Councilman White, I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, what happened years ago, but right now, we, we're doing things differently. We're doing things differently. Councilman Griner, I understand, property rights. I understand that, and I'm gonna make sure that everybody property is protected, but we got some terrible property owners along Twenty-Third Street, along some of these other commercial corridors, who refuse to do anything positive with our property. And it's not fair to the people who I represent. It's not fair at all. Now, on, this morning, we have several property owners, uh, who own property on Twenty-Third Street. DePores Hopkins, who owns property off of Twenty-Third and, and the Coltrane. We have a, a businesswoman, uh, who, who's president today, who wanna put her business on Twenty-Third Street, who wanna invest several millions of dollars to put her business, uh, right there on Twenty-Third Street. But guess what? Right next to where she wants to develop is a crack gas station. I'm sorry, but we deserve better than that. We deserve better for its community engagement. Uh, and I want to thank Kathy O'Connor. Uh, when I first started talking about this whole, uh, deal of trying to create a, a new urban renewal district, we got together and we talked about the need for community engagement. And we've done that, and we're going to continue to do community engagement. Kathy hired Michael Orange, raise your hand, uh, who was the, uh, director of the Ralph Ellison Library, to help with the whole community engagement. We have had meetings after meetings after meetings with individuals, with groups, and larger groups. Matter of fact, we, we formed a stakeholder group to talk about this stuff, and we have several members of the stakeholders committee, uh, who's president today. Pastor Dorm, who's the, uh, president of the Progressive Baptist State Convention, and Pastor Jimison, who's the pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, and we have others here, Sisters in Motion, uh, readers, readers here. So, we have had this, the, the strong community engagement piece. We've been on the radio over and over again, talking about what we're doing right in here, right today. Not one organization has said, hold up, this is wrong. Not one. Not one church has come and said, hold up, this is wrong. We have worked and worked on this, and it's time to move it forward. I move by them.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a sec on the item.
No, I'd like to just respond just for a moment, since I, first of all, uh, I'm uncomfortable with a lot of what was said. First of all, to, to make it personal, I have no, I, you know much more about what the one man owns than I do, so you should not say y'all. I think it's very unprofessional to make that personal and try and somehow make this a family issue. I have no idea what's, what's going on real estate-wise with that one individual. You know much more than I do. I'm very concerned with some of the language that I just heard about how we might use eminent domain. Nobody's more concerned about drug use in the city, what, public health, what it's impacted to the city, but using eminent domain as a, a law enforcement mechanism, or a, a, a means of, uh, retribution to those who won't play ball, uh, would, I, I don't, some of that might be able to be spelled out in specific terms. If we're going to use eminent domain to try and combat drug usage or other criminal activity, perhaps we could define that very clearly in the eminent...
And again, Councilman Shadid...
I didn't interrupt you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you. So, if, if, uh, if it is possible for matters, for the execution of an eminent domain action to come back before the council, I would ask that municipal councillor's office draw that up in the next week, and let us see exactly what that might look like. To me, there would be no downside to another checks and balance. If, if what you're saying is true, and there's a, a true need for the public good to execute eminent domain, then it, maybe it shouldn't just, not maybe, it shouldn't just be five unelected people who have no, no election, there's no, no obligation to the people, five unelected people in a, in a body, not just have that five Board of Commissioners, but haven't come back before the council, who is more directly responsible to the people. Uh, we cannot possibly know who the five Board of Commissioners are gonna be fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five years from now. Uh, we cannot possibly know who the five Board of Commissioners are going to be fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five years from today. And for that reason, uh, and because of some of the concerns that, that were highlighted in, in the city's history, it would seem prudent to have, add that extra layer of checks and balances and have any eminent domain action not only require a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners, but also come back to the city council for approval. And I'd ask Kenny, if, if your office can draw that up in the next week.
I think that would be a proposed amendment to the, to the plan. We can do that. But, um, I don't, don't know whether you're going to finally approve this today or not. It could be finally approved today.
I, I move for final approval.
I thought this was just being introduced today. The, the TIF, the TIF is, the resolution.
This is just a resolution on the plan.
Amendment would be to the TIF, the next, the constitutional powers?
No, it'd be to the plan. You would be, you'd be proposing an amendment to the plan that's before you today.
Well, then I'd ask for a deferral for a week until you can show us what that amendment would look like.
Because of the fifteen-day notice requirement, we can't defer it for a week. It would have to go back through the fifteen-day notice requirement, and we'd have to repost it and repost all the signs and all of the different steps.
And, and I appreciate the delay and what that might mean, but we're talking about the next twenty-five years. And so I, I'd ask that we delay until we can see what that amendment would look like.
That would be a motion to defer it for three weeks.
I would move to defer it for three weeks. May I ask a question about that?
Yeah, sure, Dave.
If we were to pass, uh, a motion today, could amendments be made at a later point in time?
Yes.
Okay.
You would have to go through the same process to make an amendment to it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If an amendment was to be made, would it go, would it just be at this level or would it go back through the whole process? Let's go back to urban renewal, go back to planning commission, all that?
So it would probably take longer than three weeks.
We have two amendments. Francis, is there an order that we should follow, or which one we vote on first? The first was James's.
Yes, Your Honor, the motion to defer takes precedence over all the other motions.
All right.
So that would be your.
Ed has made a motion to defer this item for three weeks. There has not been a second to that motion. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer item nine H, three weeks. Cast your votes on the deferral. The deferral fails, three, six. All right, James has made a motion to, uh, amend item three, three C, one C. Do you want to state your motion and?
Yeah, I, I move to amend, uh, three C, one C. And, and to clarify, that does not take out all pub, all eminent domain. It is only that one stipulation.
You're deleting.
To limit it, to limit it more.
Three C, little I, little C. You're deleting that requirement.
Yes, okay. Is there a second on James's motion?
Would this amendment required to go all the way back through the process again?
I'm Leslie Bachelor, Legal Counsel to the Urban Renewal Authority. Um, I, I think it's debatable. Um, I think just removing one provision, um, could arguably still go forward. Um, I think, um, given that the focus of the discussion with both the stakeholders and with the commissioners of the authority really was on the eminent domain provisions. And, and frankly, that one in particular, I think our board, um, would, would like a chance to look at the plan again. Um, on that point, I, I think two things are worth bearing in mind. First of all, um, that provision is limited by the two provisions regarding absolutely no exercise of eminent domain against owner-occupied residences. We are painfully aware of that history. And, um, I would encourage the council to look at the past fifteen or twenty years of acquisition of property by the Urban Renewal Authority, most recently in the Coors Ashore area, where things have gone, I think, very smoothly. We work closely with landowners, and you're not seeing the kind of wholesale acquisition, um, that we had back then.
It doesn't limit it on a business, though.
It, it can be used on a business or an absentee landlord. And the reason this provision is important, frankly, is to fulfill some of those unfulfilled promises. There are still blocks of property on the east side that are sadly extremely vacant, in part because Urban Renewal may own as much as, as half of a residential block. If the rest of the block is locked up, it's very difficult, um, to build enough housing that the market will support, um, purchasing that. So there are these isolated pockets, and I assure you, it's very limited. But it's, it's narrow, but nevertheless important, and I think it would be very useful to have in the plan. It, it was discussed, um, with stakeholders, and it was a concern of our board. They looked very closely at that provision and in the end were comfortable once they knew that the community was comfortable.
Leslie, may I ask a question? Just for clarification, did you say the section that we're discussing right now, the ability to acquire property, uh, to extend, say, a full block, is not available if it relates to a owner-occupied home?
That's correct. Can you share the next slide?
No, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, these two provisions apply regardless. So these are absolute.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question about, um, it says owner-occupied, what about renter-occupied?
It does not apply to renter-occupied.
Okay, so James has a motion on the table. I don't think we've had a second yet. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the amendment to remove item three C, one C from today's resolution. All right, cast your votes. And the amendment fails, three, six. All right. Do we have a motion on item nine H as listed?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And cast your votes. And nine H passes seven, two. All right, item nine I has to do with TIF nine, and this item is being introduced today. And it's in some ways related to item nine H, but is a, a different aspect of the whole process. This item is being introduced, and a final hearing would be set for January thirteenth. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Mayor.
Yes?
Could you ask if anyone's here for the public hearing?
Is anyone here hoping to speak on item nine I today before we vote? Okay. This item is being introduced, yeah, final hearing is in two weeks. All right, cast your votes. And the item passes nine, zero, and a final hearing is set for January thirteenth. I know a lot of people showed up for these items today. I want to thank them for their involvement in the process and all of the public hearings that we've held as well. Yeah, Ken?
In order to meet the TIF requirements in the statutes, I think we need to walk through the presentation. I hate to take any more time on this, and I know you've already voted on it, but there are some requirements that are a part of the state statutes that we make sure that, um, get set in a public meeting. And, um, we'd like to go ahead and go through the presentation.
Fair enough, and again, the item's just being introduced today, so this.
I, I know, but.
We'll go ahead and, go ahead.
It's not like every other ordinance the city passes. There are specific requirements in the TIF, in the Local Development Act that we need to go through, um, what's in the plan.
Okay.
Um, so with that, we're going to go through the presentation. Some of this, I think you all are very much aware of, so we'll go through rather quickly. Tax increment financing is a local redevelopment technique that municipalities can use to fund specific public improvements and private investments. Tax increment financing allows a community to capture the increase in property values that result from the redevelopment in a blighted area. It's authorized under the Oklahoma Development Act and the Oklahoma State Constitution, Article ten, Section six C. Districts can be created for up to twenty-five years, and the taxing jurisdictions are a part of the process. The details of TIF are that the ad valorem taxes from the base assessed value continues to go to various taxing entities that receive property tax revenues. The school districts, the county, the library system, the city-county health department. The increment equals the ad valorem taxes that are generated from the net increase in assessed values. Increment is used to, uh, finance project costs. And as a part of the project plan, you designate an increment area and a project area. The process that we use to go through creating a TIF process is that we do a great deal of pre-planning. We identify the areas that might be eligible. There are certain specific categories in the state statutes that, um, that create eligibility. One of those is that the area's been declared blighted by the city council. Others include his, for historic preservation, if they're in a state-designated enterprise area. And the, and the area can be project-specific or a broader area. And, and typically in Oklahoma City, we have used a broader area for most of our TIF districts. The next step is that a resolution is adopted by the city council to appoint a TIF review committee. The TIF review committee is made up of a person from each taxing jurisdiction, from the city council, from the city planning commission, and that three at-large members are picked from a list of seven people by the committee. The TIF review committee in this, in this situation was appointed on March twenty-fifth of this year. Staff then begins work to develop the project plan. We, again, re, we refine the, the district area. We define the basis for eligibility, the budget for TIF expenditures, and we implement, we designate an implementation, um, entity or person. Actually, it's both. In this case, the city manager is the implement, is to be the implementer of the plan, and the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust is the entity that carries that out. The TIF review committee, um, met on November seventeenth and approved the project plan. They will meet again today to, to discuss it further and to adopt certain findings related to the plan. The planning commission, um, reviewed the plan on December eleventh and recommended its approval to the city council. And then the hearings today are today and on, on January thirteenth for the TIF review pla, I mean, the TIF project plan. Possible expenditures that are allowed under the plan include public infrastructure, land acquisition, public parking, assisting developers, and providing funds to the other taxing jurisdictions to carry out projects. Again, this is the calendar that we've really already gone through with the final hearings today and then again on January thirteenth. In general, the project boundaries are from Oklahoma River on the east to I thirty-five on the west, northeast Fiftieth Street on the north to northeast Tenth Street on the south. The, the project area, which is the area in which we can spend the money, is comprised of both the JFK and the northeast Renaissance urban renewal areas. Again, these are the areas where we can spend the money, not where we're going to generate the increment. So this is a map of the project area as defined in the plan. And one of the things I want to point out is that we don't have a TIF district that covers the existing John F. Kennedy urban renewal area. And that, I think that's been one of the challenges that the authority has had in the areas, that we really didn't have any additional resources that we might be able to use to help make redevelopment happen. So it was important to include that area in the project area so that we can help, especially those neighborhoods, with infrastructure, the street lighting, sidewalks, park improvements, and, and things of that nature sometime in the future. The increment boundary, though, is a, is a more narrow area, and it, it follows the commercial corridors along northeast Twenty-third Street, North Kelly Avenue, Martin Luther King Boulevard, and I thirty-five. And this is a map of the increment area. Over, now it's overlapped with the project area. So again, we'll, we will capture the increment in this, in the hashed area, and we will, would have the ability to spend it in the project area.
How far south does that go?
It goes south to, I think about Sixth Street? Fourth, fourth along, yeah, it's probably fourth, um, between MLK and, um, I think that's Stonewall.
So you could, you could spend it around the Health Science Center?
No, no, that is not really in the project area. We have another TIF district that is around the health center.
What, what are the east and west borders of the, the part that extends down south?
Let me get my bigger map out and put my glasses on. Okay, on the yellow, on the non-hashed area, the, the western street is Stonewall. Right there, that's Stonewall. So that's kind of the eastern edge of the health sciences area. On the south, it goes down to just south of, uh, Fourth Street to pick up the parcels along the south of Fourth Street. We had to make sure that we included entire parcels in the map and not subdivide parcels in and out for purposes of the, um, legal description. And then on the, on the, the west, the east side, that's Martin Luther King, right there.
Okay.
Um, the plan objectives are to, I've, um, stated in the plan that, that you have today are to redevelop and revitalize the area, promote economic development, retain and create jobs, stimulate new investment in Oklahoma City, preserve and enhance the tax base, stimulate public and private investment in the area, and provide development opportunities for the other taxing jurisdictions in the increment district. It will assist in the implementation of the John F. Kennedy urban renewal plan that I mentioned a few minutes ago, and the northeast Renaissance urban renewal plan. The increment, uh, which is, again, not to exceed a twenty-five-year period, is to come from ad valorem taxes that are anticipated between twenty-seven and thirty million dollars over the lifespan of the, of the district, and sales tax increment revenues that are anticipated between twenty-eight and thirty-two million dollars over the lifespan of the district. Again, the, the district is, is focused on creating commercial development and multifamily residential, other kinds of residential development, um, primarily, especially initially to try to generate increment. This is the estimated project cost for the plan. We have budgeted a total of forty-five million dollars in project costs over the twenty-five-year period. Seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars can be allocated to residential development, twenty-two and a half to, uh, retail and commercial development. Public improvements and development include twelve million dollars, and then other public development is two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The implementation of the plan is expected to stimulate about two hundred and twenty-five million in taxable private investment and development, uh, in the area, including affordable residential development and retail and commercial investments. This is the process that we use for TIF requests today, and we will use this process for this TIF district as well. Requests would go through a review by staff. Those requests are then taken to the TIF review committee. The TIF review committee, if they approve the allocation or recommend approval, it then goes to the city council for action and approval, and then consideration by the Economic Development Trust. So the, the purpose of today's public hearing is to provide information regarding the proposed project plan, to answer questions, whether from the public or the city council, to announce the second public hearing in regard to the creation of increment district number nine will be held on January thirteenth, twenty fifteen, at the city council meeting, and at which time interested persons will again have the opportunity to express their views on the proposed plan. And that's what I needed to do.
Kathy, could I just, uh, sorry. If I could just maybe ask you a question or clarity or make a comment. You know, I think all of us around the horseshoe are really accustomed to this language of ad valorem taxes and taxing criminal fines, but it is complicated, and it's hard for people to understand. So I'm going to try to be really simple and correct me if I make any misstatements. But we're talking about, um, creating a new district, a tax increment financing district that's allowed by state statute.
Correct.
And that provides the, the city, the municipality, the opportunity to take advantage of new real estate taxes that are created by new development. real estate taxes that are created by new development.
Yes.
We have a baseline of tax that's currently in existence, and we have the opportunity to utilize the incremental, the new taxes that are created. But we're talking about ad valorem taxes, which in lay terms are property taxes.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
The city doesn't benefit from property taxes, other than in the case of repaying our bonds, the millage for bonds.
Yeah, and paying judgments against.
And paying judgments. But otherwise, the city doesn't realize any benefit from property taxes, other than in this situation where we create a tax income and financing district. So it's essentially a new source of revenue for the city as these projects develop.
Yes, to help make things happen.
To help make things, exactly, to be used in projects. And so you might be able to say the same thing related to the other taxing entities, like the schools and those that benefit. These are new dollars to those entities.
Yes.
Because those dollars wouldn't exist if the district wasn't created.
That's correct.
Okay. So this is an important tool to create revenue, to help stimulate projects that would not be available to the city under any other circumstances, and isn't available for any other kind of project other than those specified.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Kathy, thank you. Come on forward, yes, come on up.
Can we go back to the map, please? Can we get the power?
We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
I had a question why.
Need your name and address for the record, please.
Gina Blalock, 814 Merlin Street, State Capitol View. I had a question why the map carves out Port of Capitol View Neighborhood Association. At the peak up here, I guess at the top going north, right there at the peak point, it leads off Port of the Neighborhood, go down this way, yeah, right there. That's Port of Capitol View, and I was just wondering why it's carved out.
We did try to limit the amount of residential property that we included in the TIF district, mostly because it's difficult to administrate. We were trying to help the county out to some degree. You know, it was just a decision that we made. There wasn't really any, what am I trying to say, any line drawn in the sand where we didn't want them in or didn't, it was just really trying to limit the area as much as we could, but still capture those commercial properties along Kelly, for example, or along 23rd Street.
So we do have a lot of vacant property around there, all around. Like I said, I didn't know if you talk about infilling, would that property that's not in the project area be left out for development?
We wouldn't be able to spend any tax increment financing money in the area, but that does not mean that the area would be left out from infill development.
Is there any way to add it to?
It's pretty difficult at this point. It would have to go back through the entire hearing process, and it takes several weeks to get it done. All right.
Thank you for coming down. Yes, come on forward. Good morning, thanks for your patience.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Gallimore. I resided in, I don't know, northeast 35th Street. And the one question I have, if you could just give me some clarity, where they stated on the PowerPoint, they were wanting to use $7,750,000 for residential development. Where would that residential property, where are they looking to build?
Again, this is a, it's a 25-year plan, so there isn't necessarily any specific location where we're looking at residential development. For the most part, what we are going to be looking for is multifamily residential development. So, you know, larger apartment complexes, things that help add density back to the area so that we can begin to get some other retail and commercial development to happen. We don't intend to use the TIF money for single-family residential development necessarily. I mean, that isn't really the intent. It could happen sometime in the future, but really what we need is more multifamily development to create some investment in increment so we can do other things.
Okay. Unless I just, you know, overlooked it, I didn't see that specifically stated. So that's the reason why I just wanted to ask the question, make sure none of the other residential areas in that place would be looked at as the new residential for the $7 million.
I'm not sure. We can talk about that more later.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh huh, sure. And if anyone has questions that they, for whatever reason, don't want to ask today, our staff here is well-versed on these policies and procedures, and has been through the open meetings process to develop this concept, but can certainly still answer questions about it. And again, the item's just being introduced today. The council will have a final hearing on it January 13th. Anyone else here that would like to speak in an open forum today on this matter before we move forward?
I guess I'd just ask, Kenny, if you wanted to do an amendment to have an eminent domain action come back before the council at whatever point, what would be the first step in that process?
To the urban renewal plan, that would be?
Well, if you're talking about the TIF project plan, it would go to the TIF review committee first. That's the first official step in the process. And then it would go to the planning commission, and then it would come here.
And it would have to pass those bodies to get back here?
It doesn't necessarily, they don't vote to approve them, they just make a recommendation.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
All right, well, on item 9J, this is our annual agreement on retiree health insurance for firefighters. All right, any comments or questions here today before we vote? All right, thanks. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Mentioned George Feen is here today, represents the retired firefighters. George, we appreciate your attendance today. Item K is our contract agreement with ASME. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions here on item 9K? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 9L is a, this is a mirror contract, really, that the people that aren't represented by ASME, it would give the same benefits and responsibilities.
Right, we have a few people that are in the ASME ranges that are not represented by ASME because of their job classifications, or generally in the payroll department or personnel. And this would mirror the pay plan.
So this puts L in alignment with K. All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously.
Mayor, I would like to recognize the staff for all the work they've put into developing these contracts. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort and cooperation on everybody's part, and I really would like to thank everybody for sticking to it.
Absolutely. Item 9M, I understand we do not need executive session.
No, this is a worker's comp settlement.
All right, how about a motion then to move it on? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 9N, understand we do not need executive sessions, how about a motion to strike?
Strike, second.
Cast your votes, item is struck from the agenda. Item 9O, understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
How about a motion to move item 9O into executive session? Cast your votes, that item moves to executive session. Item 9P is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak, or are any of them listening to 9P? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is anyone here to speak on any of those items? All right, we have a motion in a second, we're voting on item 10A. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. James, anything today?
I'd just like to thank Pedestal Oil for doing, going through the public process and listening in public and withdrawing their application. I think that it shows that they listened, you know, and so I just wanted to thank them for that.
All right, Ed?
All right, I would echo that, certainly that was a good outcome. I think that, I'm not worried about recreational improvements. I think with the decades of experience we have with Councilman White and Jim Couch, I mean, I think we can, with the bonds, we can figure out how to take care of recreational improvements. We have so much experience in the Water Trust. I do think that we could probably learn about the public engagement, learn from that experience in terms of public engagement. Appreciate Meg's comment that Oklahoma City is the most successful when our residents are informed, engaged, and able to participate in an ongoing public process. I think that's a perfect roadmap for so many things that we talk about. We talked a lot about TIFs today, as Meg pointed out, it's very complicated. We have a lot of important decisions coming up in terms of TIFs downtown, the Clayco proposal, the Heinz proposal. We're just two weeks away from a DDRC review of tearing down a lot of historic buildings. To apply some of the, to have an informed, engaged public that's able to participate in an ongoing public process, I think is key. Those are important policy decisions. Recreating a new TIF, restarting the clock on a TIF, what the TIF might be used for, how much public investment. Who are the investors in the Clayco proposal? I think that maybe more than anything should be answered before public funds are committed. These are all important policy decisions, and having an ongoing public process and having the public able to participate, I think is key. But we did fall short on the public engagement process, but I'm very confident that we can learn from the experience and apply those lessons, especially to the important things that are coming up in the next couple of months. Thanks.
Larry?
Just to remind the people out there that, of course, New Year's Eve, we've got the opening night going on downtown. I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy new year.
Pete?
Mr. Trump, this has been a very good year for Oklahoma City. And this has been a very good year for Oklahoma City. I think all of us sitting around this horseshoe would agree that this has been a good year. From a financial standpoint, Oklahoma City's in good shape. And I think, I would like to thank all of my colleagues here for a good year on the council, a good year of things that we did together and things we did for Oklahoma City. I think the citizens of Oklahoma City have responded well to it, and I think we have lots of reasons to feel good about the upcoming year. There are potentially a number of problems in the upcoming year with falling oil prices and some of those things that may cause budget concerns, but I think we have a reason to feel very optimistic about the future. I thank all of you for permitting me to be a part of it.
David? Meg?
Larry, I would just like to echo your comments about opening night. I want to remind everybody that there's a change of venue for the closing ceremonies. We'll be in Bicentennial Park this year, beginning about 11:30, I think, when all the other activities conclude and the ball will rise, I guess, in Oklahoma City at midnight, right in front of the Civic Center. So it's going to be chilly, so make sure you wear gloves and hats and earmuffs and things, but come on down, they're expecting a big crowd. It's a great night for the arts council, and I hope everybody will be safe and enjoy a prosperous.
Beth? All right, city manager reports.
We have a couple of presentations this morning. These are MAPS 3-related projects, specifically with the wellness centers. And Ryan Eschleben is here today to go over the first one. He's with GSB, and he's going to talk about the Northwest facility.
Good morning. This is just a quick update. We are in the home stretch of the process on senior center number one, and wanted to kind of let you know where we were. We've had a very busy fall, working with Mike Dover and his subcommittee, the MAPS team, and the operator. There you go. This process began last spring, working with the operator, the MAPS staff, touring some facilities and working through the budget and the desired program to identify the components that were most desirable for senior center number one. They included everything from fitness facilities, multipurpose spaces, and most notably, an activity pool. The site, as you recall, is going to be acquired from Putnam City Baptist Church. It's on the northeast corner of their property at approximately Northwest 112th and Rockwell. You can see a depiction of the site plan there with frontage onto Rockwell, the building facing south, with parking in front, circulation and some activity spaces around, and direct connection to the church parking facilities as well for additional overflow parking. Healthy Living Inc., which is a subsidiary of the church, will be the operator of the facility. The building itself, as we've shown you before, includes a mix of physical fitness components. You see there in purple, which include a full gymnasium with ample apron space to provide a walking course 365 days a year in conditioned space, fitness facilities, and what we're calling a hybrid fitness pool, which provides the opportunity for fitness classes, water walking, standing areas, buoyant areas, and lap swimming as well. Of course, the full complement of locker room spaces to support that, and aerobics, yoga, multipurpose studio. The other major component of the facility are multipurpose spaces that will support everything from lifelong learning to social activities, education, there'll be a demonstration kitchen for healthy cooking classes, arts and craft spaces, reconfigurable furniture to allow for dances, card playing, all sorts of activities. There are also some dedicated spaces devoted to a small preventative care clinic, some billiards and game room spaces, private consultation rooms for some life coaching and some other activities that the operator intends to provide, and administrative space. The other main component is lounge and communal living space. This is intended to be a place where people are comfortable engaging socially throughout the day for complete health for seniors. That includes not only physical fitness, it includes keeping an active mind, and it includes primarily social engagement. So at the entrance, they'll be, similar to a hotel lobby, there'll be a lounge space where there is a desk with people to assist you, there's a cafe with coffee and other small food items available, there's quiet reading space, there's opportunities to watch the news on TV and other activities, just to engage with one another, and also to clearly provide a sense of activity when you walk through the front door. So that's just an overview of the plan for the facility that we're developing. This is a rendering of the exterior. We've showed you before, kind of the approach from Rockwell, a mix of masonry veneer and fiber cement panels, drop-off canopies, some porches, some outdoor activity areas. This is the main lobby space, lounge space that I mentioned, which will include soft seating, some table area for dining, a welcome desk, digital signage and media, access to outdoor spaces, and connectivity to all of the other components within the facility that we mentioned. One other thing that I think I've mentioned before is this is intended to serve people from 50 to 100-plus, and it's intended to feel vibrant and contemporary, and appeal to folks at all points in that age range. So you will see that it does not look like an assisted care facility or some residential care facility. This is very much a public amenity and is intended to be vibrant and a social hub. This is another social space related to the fitness and activity centers. One of the things that this facility is intended to do is to entice people who may never have engaged in fitness activities, to watch others their age and of their ability to do the same, and to feel confident that they can begin a physical fitness program, take some baby steps into that aspect of a healthy lifestyle. So the glazing and the windows are an opportunity for people to observe that occurring before they are confident enough to engage in it as well. This is the hybrid fitness pool we described. You'll see ramped access, lanes, varying depths, all sorts of different aspects of this pool to basically provide the maximum number of uses possible. This is the budget we're working towards, and of course, we're continuing to look at the program and the amenities to get that project in budget when we deliver it hopefully in February. We're at 95%. We're not at final plans, so we're continuing to work through January to deliver that project. Our tentative schedule is to bring that back before the subcommittees and the advisory boards in February, and hopefully back to this body in early March to begin the process to bid and construct the project. So that's a quick up- So that's a quick update on where we are, and hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll be back to take the exciting step of moving forward with construction. I welcome any questions that you have.
I have a question. On the construction schedule?
Yes.
We have construction beginning May of 2015. When would you expect the facility to be open to the public?
With the disclaimer that the construction schedule will be ultimately established by the winning bidder contractor, we think this is a 15- to 16-month construction project, so a little over a year.
Has the sponsoring entity determined what fee, if any, they're going to charge?
I do not know what Healthy Living's intentions are. Bill Fleming, who's been before this body before, can answer that specifically, but I do know that they're in, developing their operational plan that includes that element.
I was just curious, David, where we are in the public art process with regard to this center and maybe the second one as well?
With which process?
The public art piece, the 1% for...
Well, we've deposited the money with Robbie, so they're working on that. And in fact, there'll be a presentation at the next subcommittee meeting about that, and they'll be putting together that group.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. And you want to go on to number two?
Thanks.
Okay.
Next up with Wellness Center Number Two is Alan Brown from FSB. Morning, Alan Brown with FSB, and we're glad to be here to talk about Senior Health and Wellness Center Number Two. This is a list of the project requirements that are for all the senior health and wellness centers. I won't go through all that, but around 36,000 square feet, serves about 4,000 seniors. And this is the budget on the project. Total construction budget is $10,560,000. Our project team, of course, of Oklahoma City, facility operators, North Care, and Nancy Reed's here to answer questions later on the program, a presentation if you have any. Our design consultant is Moody Nolan out of Columbus, Ohio, and Mark Bodine is the principal of the firm is also here, is going to make part of the presentation today. And the rest of our team, landscape architect Howard Fairburn, site design, and our quality designer is Councilman Hunzaker in St. Louis. Design process, we had the notice received July 14th of this year, and we've had numerous programming, budgeting, concept designings. You can see, we presented the schematic design to the subcommittee November in the MAPS III committee, and you'll get to see that today. It's the first time you've seen it, I guess. Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Mark to talk about some of the design principles for the project that follows the, basically, the three areas of wellness, fitness, health, and social and community, and how that ties into the North Care philosophy. Mark?
Thank you, Alan. In the area of senior design, we really, several principles we've been following here, mainly about dealing with the idea that seniors are a vast spectrum of abilities and ages and interests, 50 to 90-plus in terms of activity and what they may be attracted to in a facility like this. The ideas of universal design, having a comprehensive approach to seniors of mind, wellness, fitness, body, spirit altogether is really important to the seniors of today, and really are the seniors that are all of us here today. This facility really is, takes advantage of the way that MAPS set up your project process for the four, which was to define for each community a slightly different approach to how seniors would be served, in this case relating to the area of the city as well as the interests and the strengths of the operator, which is North Care. So we've taken a broader approach than a traditional senior center to try and take advantage of and attract a larger segment of the population that could use these facilities. In the wrong way, design process. We really took the idea of this being a path, that the senior living was a path, and there's a path to fitness and wellness and mind-body-spirit, the ability to support seniors, to keep them in their homes, to be engaged parts of the community. And really, the path was a lot about movement and activity, the idea that just keeping people moving and keeping people active is one of the fundamental parts of being successful in your, the silver years, that it was a path of walking or shuffling or rolling as your needs and your abilities changed over the years. And that really became a kind of a theme for this facility, the idea of creating a space that was always active, always inviting you to do something else to explore different interests. It was a path to sort of movement as one of the core principles. That might be movement in water, water being a very forgiving way and a great way for seniors to get exercise that is less stressful than others, a movement of walking, a movement of rolling, but keeping moving and doing that in a way that it was a social experience that was a well. Seniors don't go to the gym, they go for social experiences, and if recreation and exercise is a part of that, all the better. It was a piece of addressing seniors that could be the working seniors and people at age 50, all the way up to the retired ages, that they would have, keep moving but in different ways, that there was a path of exercise. They would select different ways to work together. They would either work together as in classes, as a social space, or work together individually with a trainer or just themselves, or whatever their interests and their abilities would be. And there's a developing and always expanding specialization in what you can provide for seniors and their abilities as they change as one ages. It was also a path to senior will-beating that nurtured the mind, the educational experiences you had that you have for seniors, and the diet, nutrition, the aspects of keeping healthy from a preventative side. And then importantly for North Care was the integrated health clinic. This was the option in the MAPS project that was most expanded upon in this facility, which was adding a integrated health clinic. They provided not just preventative, but also responsive medical services that was integrated. Integrated meaning that behavioral health and physical health are treated side by side, that the two become interrelated, particularly amongst seniors, and therefore bringing those providers together in one setting, providing the pharmacies, the types of spaces that keep the seniors, give them the convenience of dealing with all these issues together is very important to this operator and to the success of this facility. And finally, there was the social spaces you heard in Senior Center One, and the more traditional one was built around community social spaces, that people would seek out different levels of interaction in larger groups, smaller groups, that there'd be indoor and outdoor spaces that would be a part of this. Then finally, senior services, particularly in this area of the community. North Care believed bringing in partners that would provide services such as adult daycare, where not only as a direct service to senior members of the community, but for those who are the caregivers, to be able to participate in activities in this facility was important to have that respite care, that adult care facility right in the facility. And then finally, a support space for flexible senior services. One thing that, as we've seen across the country, is that the needs of each community change, they change over time. Sometimes it's related to housing issues, sometimes it's related to medical issues, insurance issues, and the ability for North Care to bring in partners to utilize these spaces to help the seniors, bring them services, whether it be medical or social service or educational services. The building program, we went through with North Care, a sort of a combined conceptual and programming phase that identified what was important to them in terms of the options that the MAPS III prototype gave them. Again, high priorities of social spaces, high priorities really of the educational spaces, and particularly of the medical services for this facility. You'll see, this won't go into this, there's a detail of how we got to our square footage of the building, balancing the budget and the opportunities that we had. One of the really interesting things about this project is a really unique site that is really, gives a lot back to the community in terms of how it's being located. It's just south of the Capital High School, Capital South High School on Walker. It's currently a parking lot that's underutilized except for special events and includes some tennis courts that are in a sort of a moderate condition. This area was explored as to how much space we would need and how we could utilize this to benefit both the school and the neighborhood. One of the other interesting aspects of this site is it backs up to the Hosea Vineyard Park that you heard about earlier today. In this picture here, you can see directly south of the site, there's a church, and right behind the church is the branch of the park that comes up near our site. So our site is really unique, has a lot of great frontage along Walker with public transportation going north and south along that, and ample parking, and lots of interesting neighborhood relationships. Again, the site looks very flat, but it actually isn't. It drops about 10 feet from the west to the east, one of the challenges of our site. The site as it was defined, this is existing, with you can see the tennis courts and the parking lot spaces. And then just to the south, again, this is the Hosea Vineyard Park, and I know, Councilman, you asked about whether there was discussion. We have met with the city and the Parks Department, and you can see the trail system that goes along to the north there. They're going to create a little attachment up to our trail system, so that we are taking advantage of the fact the park is there to provide this incredibly long or short, depending on the seniors' desire, path through an adjacent park, really activating that park and taking advantage of the site as well. This is our site plan along the site, and the best way to describe it is we are replacing all the parking there, creating our own parking lot dedicated for the seniors but available for special events related to the school. We are going to have a facility that basically runs east and west on the south side of the park. We're replacing the tennis courts that are existing, and those will be used by the, both the park and by the schools as sort of our part of getting the control of the site. And we're really developing this project as having a front porch and a back porch. This building is a little bit like a residence in that sense. From the parking lots, you have a very central entrance, an entrance that's highly visible from Walker, that's highly accessible from the parking, from both the parking lots and the bus stops that are along Walker, and then a back porch that sort of connects this building to the park across to the southwest side. So again, the path, an entrance from both sides that comes to a central point of activity within the building. The plan of this is really, it's a one and a half story building, which is, say, it has this main first floor, then it has an upper level that is a mezzanine that you'll see has a special use that'll be unique to this facility. But as you enter at the center of this facility, right at the center of the parking lot, there's a drop-off loop for both individual cars and buses to come in and pick up and drop off. You come to a central hub of activity. Again, as was in Senior Center One, this really is more of a hospitality-type approach to how these facilities work, that you come in and there's a welcome desk, there's oftentimes volunteers and professional staff that can immediately orange you, and as you come in, you have a sense of activity and all the different things that are going on in this facility. We'll look at the areas a little bit more closely up and as we come through. From that hub, which you come in on the upper right in this diagram, you come in and there are, it's all open. The best description of this space was creating a path that was open to all the different activities, that you came in, you saw different activities, you saw active things, you saw passive things, you saw things that were more public, things that were private. As you came in that entrance, you saw the back porch, you saw the shaded outdoor area that during the non-hot months of the year is a very attractive space, and the non-cold months as it was today. But brought you to a center of activity, right across from that welcome desk is a small food service facility that have a different use during the day. It might be a juice bar in the morning, a coffee bar later in the afternoon, might have light sandwiches as a part of that. Adjacent to that is a help desk for taking the sort of the genius bar approach to seniors, where they can check out laptops or check out various tablets and use them throughout the facility as a part of the educational process. As you move to the west on this facility, you go past the multipurpose rooms that can be used for congregant meals. There's the adult daycare center, there is a small food bank storage space, there is the integrated health clinic and an arts room. And then sort of as the activity, sort of to bring people down and make a path on this level, at the far left side, there is a demonstration kitchen that the MAPS subcommittee suggested, and we actually moved into the corridor to really activate that space. That was one of the really good suggestions that came from the MAPS Senior Wellness Subcommittee on how to even take our idea even further. The idea was no corridors, that there was open spaces, that there was light, there was activity, there were different sizes of places for people to gather. If we move to the other side of the facility, if you came in, and again, when you come in the door, this is all obvious to you, and you can see the activity, as straight to the south, you see that's where the activity spaces, where the fitness areas are, where you can see people of your own age group and others participating in either a group exercise spaces or individualized exercise spaces. We call them neighborhoods of fitness, where people can be as public or as private as they want to be in these types of facilities. The lounge spaces that, again, might have TVs, might be the quieter spaces, different levels of activity, different choices for the seniors that will change during the day and change during their experience of this facility from age 50 to age 90. As you move to the right-hand side, past the multipurpose exercise room, where there might be a chair aerobics or a yoga class or even a pickleball, and we have a high ceiling that can even do adult volleyball in those spaces. There is a locker changing facility, a game room space, which again is more of an open space that is related to all the other facilities, more social spaces to sit at the end. At the front, or the Walker side, is the, another highlight of this facility is the hybrid fitness pool. Similar to Wellness Center One, it incorporates both a warmer water with lap opportunities, with walking opportunities. It's going to be a neat pool that's going to slope from side to side, whether from one end to the other, so you can actually walk up and down the entire length of the pool, as one of the most beneficial, again, resistive things a senior can do. It also incorporates a social space into it, which is in the upper-left corner, there's what we call a little bubble couch, that after the senior aerobics class, you can go and relax and have some views out and feel, as this is also a social space. Again, it's the idea of incorporating, integrating the social experience with the wellness, with the movement, with the activity spaces that go on in this facility. And then finally, on the level, when you come in this facility and as you approach it, you'll see a upper-level walking jogging track. It's about a 1/17 of a mile, it's two and a half lanes, which is to say it's a lane for people moving faster and a lane where people can walk side by side. Again, one of the keys being just keep seniors moving, encourage movement. This is a track that's safe because it doesn't have anybody crossing it, you don't have to, it's not a part of the circulation. It has incredible views out to the park, out to Walker, to the school, and views of the activities going on inside, as well as some more fitness spaces to encourage people on there. And finally, it also has places for people to sit and rest, because again, a 1/17 of a mile may be nothing to a 50-year-old, but it may be the entire exercise regime with someone who's in their 80s. So again, the idea that this facility will have a wide range of users and a wide range of activities and does its best to accommodate all of those together. Finally, again, the approach to this building, it's the similar materials to being used in Senior Wellness Center One. It's got brick, it's got brick, it has cementitious panels. It is designed to feel not like it's a residential or a care space, but more of an active hospitality space for the facility. That has a main entrance, it's clear where people go, and as you walk up to this facility has a lot of blast. You can see the activities going on, you can have a sense of this in the evening hours. You'll see people moving by, running past or jogging past or walking past in the facility, and really connect this building to its site and to the park right next to it. Again, this is just to keep the entrance light, with translucent panels to provide a cover drop-off, but as you walk up, you'll see people lounging, you'll see people using computers, you'll see people running by, you'll see people on bicycles, you'll see people using light weights, and again, all the different activities that you have within the facility. So with that, Alan, you want to summarize a little about the budget or the schedule?
Well, as you can tell, it's been a real collaborative process working with the subcommittee and the user group and the operator. Where we are right now, we're in the course of preliminary report stage, and we have actually submitted the preliminary report to be coming to you in next January. So we're anticipating then starting final plan services in January with approval in July, and bidding in the month of July with approval of the bids in September, starting construction then, and then substantial completion the end of 2016. And that's our presentation. Any questions for either of us or the operator?
I have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
One is, I think the location of this facility really is going to lend itself to the kind of extended use that you guys are proposing as opposed to the way the other one works. I mean, the differences are, this location is going to lend itself very well to that. I mean, the fact that there's a park there, I'm glad to see that you're working together with the parks to try to make something work there. The other thing is, there's a couple of, there's some other things. One is that the church is there. I think some outreach early on to that church to find out if there's a way, some synergy that might be done there. The other thing is, it's located on school property for the most part. I think I would like for you to look at least at a relationship with the school. I understand we're talking about 50 and up. Personally, I've never been, I've never thought... never thought that was, they all ought to be the same, I think that there's a way to integrate younger people into the facility at certain times maybe, and I'd like for you to look at that with the school. The other thing is that, one of the things that I haven't seen in any of these is the connection to the library, and the possibility, Capitol Library, or the City-City Library Association is very aggressively looking for expansion, and I think some connection to the library would really be a good idea also. I think they'd be receptive to talking about it. Now tell me you've already done that.
You haven't done that.
Oh, okay, well good, I found one, you hadn't already thought of. But I do think that's a good idea, I've been working with libraries on a couple of projects, and I find them to be pretty aggressive about wanting to get deeper involved and get into the community a little bit, and it wouldn't take much space, they've got, the library doesn't have to be a permanent one, books could be rotated in and out and things like that, but I'd like for you to look at that.
Pete, the way I've seen other senior centers use that is that seniors have a lot of books in general, and they put a space for a library, and the actual members of the facility bring books from home.
Contributing, probably.
And it's kind of an honor system, they just put books out, people want to take a book, they take one and sign, they might sign their name, they might not.
Right.
But generally, it's just kind of an honor system that goes, and books are exchanged back and forth.
That's a good idea, but I just think that's a thought, I hadn't seen it in here. The other thing, this is a weird thing, and it may not, it may not work, a lot of these things cost more money than their value. Part of the property that's being taken to the west is a, was a forest project of a horticultural teacher at Capitol High School years and years ago. The idea was plant the trees and then move them at some point in time. Well, they haven't been moved, they're still there, and when you're getting ready, and most of that is where that parking lot's going to go, I think.
To the west of the parking lot.
Is it still far to the west?
Yes.
Okay, well, what I thought, I thought if it didn't go that far, that some effort to save some of those trees, because they could be utilized, they're just, the way they are now, it's going to be difficult to use them for any purpose other than a border for something, but I hate, if you're going to take those out, any of them, I'd like to think about saving those, because they're, they've been there a long time, and they're mature trees, and there's a wide variety of trees in there, and they're not going to use them for anything.
The only area where, new area we're building on is where the new tennis courts are, shown on this plan, and it's on the south part of that property, and I don't think there's a lot of trees there, so the rest of it's undisturbed.
Well, I'm very, from my standpoint, from watching it, and watching it develop, I couldn't be more pleased.
Well, thank you, there's a lot of synergy between the different facilities, and it worked out real well.
Yeah, it would be good to direct...
I had one of the...
Okay.
Well, so you have six exam rooms, would you have, you'd have two providers at the same time?
I would need Nancy to, you want to address that?
We wanted to make sure that we have the ability to have two providers.
Okay, and then the pharmacies, 430 square feet, what can you, what kind of, what can you do with that?
You want to step up here?
We wanted to make sure that the seniors that are utilizing those facilities don't have to go someplace else to fill their nets.
Right.
And so, we already operate a pharmacy at one of our locations, and felt like having a pharmacy on-site to make that an easy one-stop, while they're waiting for their script, they can go down and do some laps in the pool.
And it wouldn't be full-service, it would be, would it be limited, or can you do full-service?
I am not that familiar with pharmacies, I know that we do quite a bit with a very small space at our current one, we have a lot of automated systems that do fill the scripts.
Great, and the adult day health, the 750 square feet, what is that?
We've been working with the daily living center on this one, where they will have a facility there that they could bring people in, and one of the ideas is for caregivers. If I'm caring for a spouse that needs that level of care, that I might be able to have them go ahead and go to the daily living center, while I am able to rejuvenate myself and to maintain my own health by participating in the other activities.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
We do have Mike Dover in the audience today, Mike is the chairman of the MAPS III Subcommittee on the Wellness Centers, and then next to him is Tom McDaniel, who is the chairman of the MAPS III Committees, so, thank you gentlemen for your time and efforts on these projects.
And I think you all sense the council's excitement about these particular projects, you're anxious to see these fulfilled.
A comment I'd like to make, could you give some thought, issuing a single card so that every person could participate in all these venues?
Councilman, that is something that's ongoing right now, and we have the two operators talking, and we're looking at a software program that the city is looking at using, coincidentally, for another part of the city, it's with the Parks Department, so we are looking into that.
Thank you.
I guess I just would like to echo the enthusiasm, both projects are just fantastic, and you can, you know, I think Pete has said many times, we started with an empty folder on this project, and we've come such a long way, and to be able to see them graphically and understand how they'll be so useful for their communities, both teams have done a fantastic job putting, I think, something together that's going to be really beneficial for our citizens, and it does look like there's a little library in your design, by the way.
Space for it.
Space for a library, anyway.
Space for it, yeah. All right, thanks very much, Alan.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
And we also have the sales tax collections report for December in the packet, sales tax for December was up 3% over target, 6% over last year, so through the first six months of the year, we're within .4% of our targets, so...
Congratulations.
Not a bad place to be.
That's a, well, that's a good estimation, that's what you're supposed to do.
All right.
I don't know how you do it, but good job. All right, we have executive session?
We do.
All right, we'll be back. Oh, I'm sorry, citizens to be heard, is, no one has signed up, is there anyone here hoping to speak under citizens to be heard? All right, we'll be back after executive session.